First thing, does this blue packet look familiar? Somebody left this here on Monday. Anybody want to claim this? Come on up and get it. Meanwhile, there are 241 town meeting members. 121 constitutes a quorum. The constable informs me that a quorum is present. The sixth session of the 257th Annual Town Meeting will now come to order. We are scheduled for next week, Monday and Wednesday, the 18th and the 20th. Let's see if we need them. In your second town meeting packet, you received a set of red and green tally vote cards numbered one to six. Tonight, when you checked in, you received a new set of tally cards numbered seven through 12. If there is a tally vote tonight, we will still be using the old cards, beginning with number five and then number six. If you forgot your old cards this evening, please go to the check-in table now to get a blank set. You must write your name and precinct number legibly on each card. Tally vote cards without names or with illegible names will not be counted. Seats on the floor of the auditorium may be occupied only by town meeting members, except for the front row, which may be used by members of the press and by members of town committees and town staff participating in the presentation or discussion of articles. Such persons must wear non-voter stickers, which are available at the check-in table. Spectators and town residents who are not town meeting members may be seated in the bleachers to the rear of the auditorium. New information for town meeting members can be found on the back table to my left. Old information can be found on the back table to my right. If you wish to speak, you must raise your hand and be recognized. When appropriate, please hold up green or red cards to indicate pro or con on the issue. When you are called on, please first state your name and precinct. If you forget, I will interrupt and ask you to do so. If you need more than three minutes or more than five when speaking to a motion, you must request additional time before speaking, and town meeting will vote on your request. If you're speaking from the floor, please speak into a microphone that will be provided once you are recognized. This will allow viewers outside the auditorium to hear you. The microphone will be on when it is handed to you. Please hold it close to your mouth when you speak. Non-members who wish to speak should stand at the rear of the right-hand aisle. Any registered voter of the town of Amerist who is recognized by the moderator may speak without special permission. Others may speak with the permission of a majority. If you're making an amendment to an emotion, the amendment must be presented in writing with four copies submitted to the front table. Procedural motions, such as a motion to refer or a motion to dismiss, do not need to be presented in writing. If you make any motion from the floor, it must be the first thing you do after you have been recognized and have identified yourself. You cannot speak first and then make a motion. If you haven't already done so, please check your cell phone. Make sure it is silenced or off. We held an election for the three town meeting coordinating committee vacancies on Monday. The newly elected members are Patricia Holland, Alan Powell, and by right in, Chris Riddle. Congratulations and thank you in advance for your service. If at any point in time you're confused about proceedings, it is appropriate to call a point of order and ask for a clarification. It's also always okay to phone me, send me an email, or see me prior to town meeting if you need an explanation of any kind. First on our agenda for tonight are Articles 18, 19, and 20, and then Articles 23 through 30. And to begin, I call on Ms. Tomlin from the Finance Committee to make a procedural motion.
I move to consider Article 19 before Article 18.
Your motion has been seconded. You may speak to your motion.
Reversing the order is logical, as the Finance Committee recommends using the stabilization fund to balance the FY '16 budget by $105,000, which was the amount added to the budget when discussing community services. The committee believes that if town meeting votes a budget that has more expenditures than revenues, it should look first at the stabilization fund to close the gap. The fund was established to make up for lost revenue. It's like a savings account, and it's not tied to a specific year but can be used over multiple years. So the Finance Committee recommends using the stabilization fund this year to balance the recommended FY '16 budget, and if two-thirds vote of town meeting cannot be achieved, the Finance Committee will recommend that the $105,000 be appropriated and transferred from free cash, although free cash is best used to fund emergencies, such as extraordinary snow and ice costs. For these reasons, the Finance Committee urges you to reverse the order of these articles.
Is there discussion before we come to a vote on this procedural motion? Yes, I see a hand at the back of the aisle. Please wait for a microphone and identify yourself.
Leo Meili, Precinct 5. We talked about this the first session. On page 10 is the kind of that U-shaped, you know, we're adding money to reserves, but I wasn't expecting this motion. So how much, this is just curiosity, I do support it, how much of that?
Excuse me?
Nine million plus.
I need to interrupt you, because we're not yet discussing either the stabilization or free cash. We're just discussing the order we're going to hear them in. So I'll recognize you when we get to it, okay? Is there any further discussion on switching the order so we do 19 before 18? I see no hands. We will vote. This requires a majority. All those in favor of hearing 19 before 18, please say aye.
Aye.
No. Let's hear the, if you're against it, please say no. Nobody, it's unanimous, okay? So we now move on to Article 19. And Ms. Tomlin, you making the motion on that?
I move to appropriate and transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $105,000 to balance the FY '16 budget. The Finance Committee recommends Article 19...
Hang on a second, I hear a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I hear a second. You may speak to your motion.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommends Article 19 by a vote of five in favor, one absent, and one vacancy. The Finance Committee urges you to support this motion. And now, if we could have the chart, please? The next one, please? Okay, there you can see the stabilization fund and the free cash. Stabilization fund has $4,292,000. Oh, let me start again. If we take the $105,000 from the stabilization fund, we will be left with $4,187,283. In free cash, we have $4,860,62. And if we took the $105,000 from that, we would have $4,755,062.
Thank you. Mr. Steinberg for the Select Board.
Thank you. The Select Board voted unanimously to support this motion. It is not good financial policy to support an ongoing operating budget expenditure from the stabilization fund or from free cash. Such a practice is likely to draw negative comments in the town's annual audit from the Department of Revenue and from the Bond Rating Agency. This is a particularly bad time to take an action that could affect the town's bond rating as we are considering four different major capital projects that will require significant borrowing. However, we have no real alternative, and we must approve the transfer to balance the FY '16 budget. This body chose to add $105,000 in expenditures to the community services budget and voted not to reduce expenditures in any other budget. We recommend that you support this motion so that we can conclude the FY '16 budget process with a balanced budget.
Thank you. So this will require a two-thirds vote, because we're moving money out of the stabilization fund. And you still have a question there? Yes?
Sorry about that. Miss Q there. Leo Meili, Precinct 5. Thank you for the pie chart there. Totally answered one question, but I actually had answered my question. But I do have a comment, though. I do want people to look at page 10 in the Finance Committee Report, where you will see that nice thing on the bottom there. And if you count, one, two, three, four, five, five town meetings in a row, there has been a significant increase in reserves. Five years in a row. This is a good thing, a very good thing. And we're moving, I think we are at 13.1 percent, and we want to get up to 15, and this is, we're making great progress. So, five years in a row, no anticipated financial setbacks. I would wager that when we return to town meeting next year, you'll see six years in a row. So while it's true that for legal reasons you have to appropriate from "reserves" and you only have two options, in reality, when we return next year, we will have more money in the bank than we have today. The $105,000 will probably have nine times that, if you look at the roughly $1 million we're up to saving a year now, close to it. So yes, it is "out of balance," but the money is there. And there would be other creative ways, I think, to come up with the money. We could have avoided using reserves, I think, but it doesn't matter. It's a good way to spend the money. We liked the idea when we voted on it the first time. Most of us knew that this would have to happen. So I support the Finance Committee, both of their, both their motion, A, and since their motion, B, but I disagree with, although it's technically true, the statement of the Select Board.
Is there further discussion? Yes, I see a hand back there in the corner.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. When this matter came up previously, I asked a question that was answered by the Finance Director, and with regard to how much our principal and interest we paid each year. And my idea was to get at how much money, what is the difference between a particular bond rating, not just in percentages but in dollars? And what might we be losing by hoarding money that might be usefully spent for town services to make this a more egalitarian community?
Mr. Connor, there are two things in your last phrase that concern me a little, because you're getting into motive. The word "hoarding" instead of a more neutral word and the implication that this is not leading towards something egalitarian, so try and stick to policy and not get into motive, please.
Right. Well, so the answer of the Finance Director regarding how much interest we paid was that we paid somewhere in the neighborhood of $360,000. And that the difference between the bond rating we have and the next bond rating below it could be as much as 0.5 percent in interest, but presently it was in extreme or different circumstances where overall interest rates are higher. But that, in the present interest rate situation where banks can borrow from the Fed for almost nothing, that the difference was 0.2 percent. If you do the math, 0.2 percent, the difference between the bond rating we have now and the next lowest bond rating amounts to 700 and some odd dollars a year that it would cost us if we dropped to one bond rating. I'd just like to ask the town meeting members to consider that small amount compared to a lot of the unmet needs that are raised in this town meeting and in committees that I think we should be addressing. I don't think bond ratings are everything, that putting in money in banks is everything. I think what is important is making sure that this town, to whatever degree possible, can meet the needs of its citizens. Thank you.
Ready to come to a vote? Yes, I see a hand in the middle there.
Gordon Fried, Precinct 6. I know this is about free cash, but remind us how much the snow cost us this year?
Mr. Poehler?
We have, every year we budget about $280,000 for snow and ice removal. The total cost is, well, over $500,000, so we've essentially more than doubled, I don't know what the final figure is, but it's at least $250,000 more than what we budgeted.
Further discussion? Yes, front row here.
Larry Kelly, Precinct 5. Just more out of curiosity than anything else, what if we voted this down and then the follow-up motion from free cash, we voted that down? Could we reopen the budget and find $105,000 worth of cuts to balance this, like golf course, for instance?
Mr. Poehler, you want to try and tackle that one?
I don't think I'll try to cherry pick that answer.
Are we ready to come to a vote? I see one hand in the back corner there.
Bobby Ajayi, Precinct 2. Stabilization funds were set up with a two-thirds vote, because it's an important piece of money that we need when we need it. And I would just highly recommend going for free cash and preserving the stabilization fund for when the town is in trouble.
Ready to come to a vote? I see no further hands. We will come to a vote. This requires two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion before you to appropriate funds from stabilization, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator here is two-thirds. It has passed with two-thirds. Article 18, will that be Ms. Tomlin again?
I move to dismiss.
Motion's made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
We already have the $105,000 out of stabilization, so we don't need to use free cash.
Is there, I don't know, does the Select Board need to make a statement on this? No. Is there further discussion before we come to a vote? This is a majority vote. We are voting to dismiss Article 18. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. 18 is dismissed unanimously. We now move on to Article 20. And I believe Fran Van Trees will be making the motion?
I'm Fran Van Trees, Precinct 5, and chair of the Public Transportation and Bicycle Committee. I move in terms of the article.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
This is primarily a housekeeping article. Because the Public Transportation and Bicycle Committee was created by town meeting, we have to come back to town meeting to make changes to the committee. We are proposing three things here. First, and most importantly, we are asking to reduce the number of members from nine to seven. The original membership of the Public Transportation Committee had been seven, but in 1995, town meeting merged it with a bicycle committee and added two more members to ensure that bicyclists would be represented. In recent years, we have had difficulty attracting nine members who were active. Then this January, two of our members died. This left us not only very saddened, but with only five members, all of whom must be present to have a quorum to do the committee's business. This is the primary reason we are coming to you tonight. Of the current five members, four of us are bicyclists and represent a broad range of bicycle interests and abilities, so the prior town meeting's concerns have been addressed. Secondly, we are asking that pedestrians be added to the committee's name. We have always represented pedestrian concerns, as it is impossible to discuss bus service and bus stop locations without also addressing safe pedestrian access to these facilities. In addition, in the outlying neighborhoods, sidewalks are used by bicyclists as safe travel routes and are shared with pedestrians. Adding this to our name really only formalizes what we have already been doing. Third, we are asking you to adopt a clear and inclusive vision statement to guide the committee's work in years to come and to explain to the public and to potential new members what the committee's purpose is. Finally, let me use that as an opportunity to encourage anyone who's interested in joining us to fill out a citizen activity form. We generally meet on the third Tuesday of the month at 4:00 PM in Town Hall, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee, do you have a statement?
We have no statement, and we take no position.
Thank you. And Mr. Steinberg for the Select Board.
The Select Board voted three to zero with two members absent on April 13 to support this article. The transportation plan, which was accepted by the Select Board last week, considers public transit, bicycling, and walking as essential parts of an integrated transportation strategy. The current Public Transportation and Bicycling Committee, as has just been reported, also considers safe walking routes in its work. It makes sense to clarify the committee's statement of purpose and to add pedestrian to the committee name. As with many of our boards and committees, it has been difficult to find the number of people designated for these bodies who are qualified and willing to serve. Since a quorum is a majority of the designated number of members, not a majority of the current members, vacancies make it difficult to get the committee's work done. It makes sense to adjust the size of the committee to make it possible to have a full complement of qualified members. Thank you.
Thank you. This requires a majority vote. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? I see no hands. We will now come to a vote on the motion under Article 20, which is in terms of the article, which is before you. All those in favor of Article 20, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. We now move on to Article 23. Just want to mention once more that the attribution in the Finance Committee Report is incorrect. This is Albert Etal and not the Planning Board or whatever it said in there, Finance Committee, I'm not sure which. Article 23, I call on Mr. Gudera to make a motion, I believe. What was that?
Don't we change seats?
Oh, yes. I've got a giant note here that I just totally ignored. We're doing a little musical chairs first and bringing the Planning Board up front. I even had an arrow pointing to my note. Is he here?
Jerry Gudera, Precinct 9. I move to refer this back to the Planning Board.
Motion to refer has been made and seconded. I now call on Michael Alpert to speak to the motion. You can come forward if you want, or speak from there, your choice. Mr. Alpert is a registered voter in town but is not a town meeting member.
So we've heard a lot of concerns about this article, and we'd like to work on the concept to better address those concerns in a future proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, statement from the Planning Board, Mr. Carson? No.
Mr. Carson's in Italy.
Okay.
Richard...
I don't know where I got that from.
Richard Rosnoy from the Planning Board, also a member from Precinct 9. The Planning Board voted five to zero in support of the, to recommend that Article 23 be referred back to the Planning Board for further study. If Mr. Alpert comes back to the board with a revised proposal, we'd be interested in working with him and with his neighbors to discuss appropriate zoning in this neighborhood of the town. By the petitioner's agreement and the Planning Board's consent, Article 23 is premature and needs to be considered in the context of other future planning with regard to housing.
Thank you. And Ms. Brewer for the Select Board.
Point of order?
Yeah, I hear a point of order. Wait for the microphone, identify yourself.
Michael Burt, Whistle, Precinct 2. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, the motion was made to refer Article 23 to the Planning Board.
Thank you.
It was made and seconded. Thanks for the clarification.
The Select Board voted unanimously on April 6 to refer this motion to the Planning Board. One of the reasons we did so is because we heard from a lot of neighbors that the process itself of zoning of this type was surprising to the community. They saw it as being for particular parcels, which of course it is, and were wondering about the way things needed to be noticed. And we had a long discussion about how things are done in terms of legal notices, when various processes take place before the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals versus town warrant notices, which, as we talked about the other night, town meeting, the warrant is a different type of notice that goes out to the community. So there was a lot of confusion over what was required and what people's expectations were. And in fact, courtesy notices were sent by town staff to a butters, but there was still a good bit of confusion around that issue. We did have a brief discussion around whether or not this would be considered spot zoning. You'll see that there's a handout on the back table tonight, which makes it clear that this is not spot zoning. In fact, one can have a single family home on a parcel that can be rezoned without it being considered spot zoning. That is not the issue here. But it did seem appropriate, given the conversations that were taking place and as the Planning Board stated and the petitioner stated, that there needs to be additional discussion about how this fits in with the master plan, with possible future UTAC development, et cetera. The Select Board absolutely believes in both preserving neighborhoods and in increasing density, and obviously, that's a balance to be struck. So we look forward to talking about this again in another venue, but not here.
Thank you. And Mr. Braun for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee initially considered this and recommended the article, but that was before we knew that there was a motion to refer. You can read our recommendation and rationale in your Finance Committee booklet, but then later, we, once the motion to refer was made, we convened and voted four to zero with two absent to recommend referral. Thank you.
Thank you. So since this is a motion to refer, it only requires a majority vote to pass. I have a couple people who asked to speak, but before doing so, before I call on them, I just want to remind people, the discussion is on the pros and cons of referring this article. We don't want to go too far into discussion of the pros and cons of the zoning change itself, because that's not before us now, just the motion to refer is before us. So David Markland asked to speak. If you, okay, passes, excellent. And Claudia Brown, town, yes, you still wish to speak? You may come forward or stay there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Claudia Brown, Precinct 9. May I have two additional minutes, please?
All those in favor of a total of five minutes from Ms. Brown, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
You have additional time. You may proceed.
Thank you. I'm speaking against referral based on my belief that the article is fundamentally flawed and should not be referred for further consideration or returned to a future town meeting. I have three points to make as reasons not to refer. First, this article is based on rezoning selected properties in a residential neighborhood to allow for high-density housing, which referral cannot fix. communities from ad hoc petitions precisely like this one. Singling four parcels out of a larger RN neighborhood to rezone for high-density housing where it is currently prohibited is arbitrary zoning at best, whatever you want to call it. It gives preferential treatment to a few to the detriment of the rest of the neighborhood. And further, referral would encourage similar efforts in other locations where a single abutter can ask to rezone, thus pushing back the buffer that surrounds the university and moving high-density student housing from one residential neighborhood to the next. And lastly, this article should not be referred, as that would simply be kicking the can down the road if rezoning for high-density is involved. Referral suggests that development creep that is inherent in this rezoning effort is something the Town supports. And as a Town Meeting member who ran on a platform of defending neighborhoods, I will stand up for my own and for all Amherst neighborhoods and send a clear message that many of us in Town Meeting will vote against arbitrary rezoning and will do all we can to protect the integrity of our residential neighborhoods. We need to strengthen our neighborhoods by upholding their zoning designations and encourage, not discourage, families to return to our town. Or our town, one of the premier college towns in the country, will become just another college town with a world-class university surrounded by ghettoized student housing and the chipping away of our year-round neighborhoods. Please vote no on referral or no on the article. Thank you very much.
Ms. Adams had asked me recognized. You still want to be recognized?
Mr. Moderator, may I ask for two more minutes?
Ms. Adams would like an additional two minutes. Bring it up to five. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. You've got two extra minutes.
Thank you. I oppose referral of Article 23 because I believe developer-initiated rezoning is a bad idea and a dangerous precedent in its impact on abutters.
Up, yeah, the clock should be set to five.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Sorry, your time is up.
I thought I just got an extra two minutes there.
Okay.
Keep raising it, please.
You may proceed now.
Okay, yes. It should not be given the credibility of referral to the Planning Board. I urge that we vote no on referral and then no on the article itself. My comments all address the question of referral that is now before us. First, why is referral a bad idea? The developers ask to rezone contiguous properties from RN, which does not allow apartments or townhouses, to RG, which does. The three developers own 13 properties, 11 of them rented to students. This ad hoc rezoning proposal will tip this neighborhood from a manageable mix of family and student rentals to a large-scale development that will destroy the balance and damage the abutters' quality of life. So why does it pose a dangerous precedent? Although the developers claim otherwise, in this photo -- are we good? We're good. Okay. Where are we? In this photo, you see one of the properties in question from a backyard on Pokeberry Ridge. The deck is where we're looking from. One of the properties is literally a stone's throw away. They're very close, and as you know, noise rises, and Pokeberry Ridge is well above Butterfield Terrace. So all of the Pokeberry Ridge abutters and many other neighbors vigorously oppose this rezoning. As homeowners who made perhaps the major investment of their lives, they and we have a reasonable expectation that the rules will not change easily to cause irreparable harm for another's gain. They reasonably thought their homes would remain protected through RN zoning. So why not refer this to the Planning Board? Because a vote against referral sends a clear message to the Planning Board against this dangerous precedent for development creep. If we encourage the Planning Board to consider this ad hoc rezoning precedent, there is no turning back, and none of us can look to current zoning for protection. The precedent will initiate a domino effect of rezoning on behalf of developers, and we will lose the distinctive residential neighborhoods that still almost miraculously remain in pockets throughout Amherst. Here are some examples of potential development creep where RG abuts RN. So we get another visual. Does that work? Not quite. Yes. A vote against -- so you can see where the RG is, you can see where the abutments are, where the contiguous properties are, and this is just a small snapshot of the potential precedent that faces the entire town. So a vote against referral carries a clear message that we expect our Planning Board to do no harm to our precious residential neighborhoods in their efforts to support development. Do no harm. This means that we not refer because we favor the framework of Article 11 of the zoning bylaw, which is on the designated page I give there, which this request violates. 112401, "Protection of Town Amenities and Abutting Properties Through Minimizing Detrimental or Offensive Actions." And we're talking about the actions that sometimes accompany densification for student rentals. Two, "Protection of Abutting Properties from Detrimental Site Characteristics Resulting from the Proposed Use, Including Noise, Lights or Visually Offensive Structures or Site Features." But referral of this article moves the town in the opposite direction. It supports facts on the ground that diminish the urgency of public-private residential developments in campus locations that will not encroach on residential neighborhoods. I oppose referral because I do not want to see the Planning Board consider this dangerous precedent of ad hoc rezoning that will only encourage ad hoc development creep parcel by parcel, rezoning by rezoning. The domino effect of this, if we do not stop it by a vote not to refer, will destabilize year-round neighborhoods, upset an already precarious student and family equilibrium, and undermine efforts already underway to achieve the right balance between large-scale housing developments and the historical and residential character of at least this part of Amherst. So I urge you to join me in voting no on referral and no on the article itself. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Yes, Mr. Tucker.
I'd like to respond just to a couple of the technical aspects of this. Massachusetts state law under Chapter 40B allows several methods -- spells out several methods by which zoning can be changed. It can be changed by proposed action from town boards and committees. It can be changed by proposals even from regional planning agencies. It can be changed by a letter from or a petition article representing any individual property owner in a community. So this is not an ad hoc process. The process, once somebody makes a request, is it goes through the review of the Planning Board, it comes to Town Meeting, and Town Meeting decides what to do with it, whether it makes sense or not. The process itself, however, is enshrined in state law and is in fact founded in the Massachusetts Constitution, among other things. The cited sections under Article 11 that were on the screen are criteria that are used by the Planning Board in reviewing site plan review permit applications. They are not criteria that are established for evaluating zoning proposals, although certainly some Town Meeting is free to use them for that purpose. Thank you very much.
Yes, I see a hand in the back aisle there.
This is on, I know it is. Aaron Hayden, Precinct 8. I wanted to express my appreciation to the Planning Board for even considering and accepting in the end, I hope, this referral. As we've just learned, there are many ways that zoning amendments can come before us. I think that any amendment that comes to us is legitimate and may need the attention of the public hearings and the effort that the Planning Board would bring to it. So I appreciate their extending the offer, and I believe this would account for any zoning amendment that we would hear, that they would bring it into the process and help create an amendment that is more suitable to our needs here in the town, using the tools that they have of public hearings and public meetings, as well as the research that's available to them.
Further discussion? Yes, right there. Remember, we're talking about the pros and cons of referral.
Sarah LaCorne, Precinct 9. I am voting for referral of this article. I think it's important that this article gets to be discussed with the Planning Board and the pros and cons of it have a chance to be aired. I would like to clarify also that regarding the zoning, right now, RN, townhouses and apartments are not allowed, but in an RG, they are only allowed via special permit, which is not a by right use. So technically, they would only be allowed if they got permission from the Planning Board after what I would imagine would be an extensive process. No? OZBA, okay. So special permit, but that does not make it a by right use. So it's my opinion that this is a critical transition zone between the university and downtown, and this really needs to be discussed by the Planning Board. So I urge you to refer this and give it that opportunity. Thank you.
All the way over there, second row.
Abby Jensen, Precinct 4. I have a question. So if we voted down this motion to refer and we voted on the original article, is there anything to stop the petitioner, just coming back next year with another petition for the Zoning Board and then that coming back to Town Meeting? I mean, is this one of those that you can't come back for two years or whatever after we voted it down?
Okay, let me go first and try and answer that. First of all, there's actually no such thing as voting on the article. If the motion to refer fails, we will need another motion to vote on, and somebody will need to make a motion. Possibly somebody would move in terms of the article, in which case a two-thirds would be needed. Possibly somebody would move to dismiss. Those are kind of the only two options. But it would have to be another motion, and that's what we would vote on. There is special language that talks about a zoning petition article that's dismissed, and the Planning Board doesn't need to bring it back. And correct me if I'm wrong in this. Planning Board isn't required legally to bring it back, but the Planning Board can still choose to consider it and think about that neighborhood, about zoning changes there. They're not prohibited from doing so. Was that a reasonable explanation? Yes. I hear a point of order. Is it really a point of order? Okay, go ahead. You may -- I'm sorry. I will assume positive things.
I think my points of order usually are really --
I'm sorry, identify yourself.
Ketten Tharp, Precinct 1. This is admittedly maybe not exactly, but you said in answer to her question there, was asking about the two years to bring something back, and you said if it's dismissed, then it can't be brought for two years, but I think it's the same --
It can be brought by the Planning Board. It can't be brought back by the petition.
It can be brought by the Planning Board, but not by the petitioner.
Yes.
But I also think if the article is voted down with a no vote, that's also the same thing. It can't be brought by the petitioner for two years.
Yes, because they're both considered negative votes. Yes. Where were we? We're just open to discussion here now. Second row, right there. Yes, yes.
Steve Bloom, Precinct 10. Am I missing something? Hasn't this already been before the Planning Board? So why would it need to go back? Or has it been before the Planning Board already? So what's the point of sending it back again?
So, okay, so someone from the Planning Board care to reply to that? Mr. Rosnoy.
Planning -- Richard Rosnoy, Planning Board, also Precinct 9. Planning Board's actions parallel those of the Finance Committee. At first, we considered the original application for the zoning change, and that vote was taken, it was voted five to one with one member absent to recommend that Town Meeting adopt the article. Then, when information appeared that indicated that the substance of the application was changing as the process was evolving, Planning Board reconsidered it, and that vote was five to zero with two members absent to recommend that Article 23 be referred back.
Thank you. Let's see, way in the back there.
Ira Addis, Precinct 2. I'm going to support not referring this back to the Planning Board, and if possible, I'm going to vote to not approve this original article in the first place. I'm very concerned when -- well, let me back up a little bit. First place, I don't have any question about the integrity, the goodwill, the hard work, the efforts that everybody on our appointed boards and most of our elected officials bring to their work. On the other hand, I have been involved directly in a number of processes recently in the town. I've been following this process. I've been following the Planning Board meetings on the downtown development, and I have been very involved in the retreat issue of recent past. My concern is the process. My concern is, it seems to me in this process, that very, very legitimate views of the community, frequently large portions of the community, seem to be met with no response or a sense that somehow the community is upsetting the plans of these boards or the central town. I was, quite frankly, appalled at the retreat process because I felt that that process was not responsive to the community's input in that area. I'm not going to go into details. That's not what we're talking about. But in this particular situation, once again, it's felt to me that significant tenets of our planning guidelines are not being upheld to support the communities in Amherst. And I think a loud message needs to get back to the Planning Board that this is not okay with us. So I'm going to --
First place, I don't have any question about the integrity, the goodwill, the hard work, the efforts that everybody on our appointed boards and most of our elected officials bring to their work. On the other hand, I have been involved directly in a number of processes recently in the town. I've been following this process. I've been following the planning board meetings on the downtown development, and I have been very involved in the retreat issue of recent past. My concern is the process. My concern is, it seems to me in this process, that very, very legitimate views of the community, frequently large portions of the community seem to be met with no response, or a sense that somehow the community is upsetting the plans of these boards or the central town. I was, quite frankly, appalled at the retreat process, because I felt that that process was not responsive to the community's input in that area. I'm not going to go into details, that's not what we're talking about. But in this particular situation, once again, it's felt to me that significant tenets of our planning guidelines are not being upheld to support community, the communities in Amherst. And I think a loud message needs to get back to the planning board, that this is not okay with us. So I'm going to oppose both of those articles.
Yellow shirt in the back there.
Rolf Carlstrom, Precinct 10. As many of you know, I'm a strong advocate for what I call a family-friendly perimeter around University of Massachusetts. I think what we have in Amherst is almost unique in this country. By the hard work of this body and many of our neighbors, we have managed to preserve a family, family community on the edge of a massive state university. Most university towns have become ghettoized. Student ghettos surround the universities. I view this as an asset to our town. I'm arguing against referral here, because I think the actions of the planning board, by already supporting this article and then pulling it back, show that there's a different view there, and that the town meeting actually has a very strong legislative function here to say, what is it that the citizens, that the legislative body, think is most important? Having a family-friendly perimeter is most important. Densification and arbitrary spot, individual zoning to allow large, high-rise apartments similar to the Kendrick Place development that was approved by this planning board, I think are completely against what we need in this town to preserve it as a unique and functional college town. Functional because the family-friendly perimeter allows students to be integrated into the neighborhood without destroying those neighborhoods. It allows for student behaviors to be mitigated by citizens. Unfortunately, we become the police of the neighbors. When you get large, densified, spot-zoned parcels that allow for large developments, you lose that, and we become just another, unfortunately, a college town where you have a commuter population of workers and a student population who live there. So referring this back to a planning board that has already decided to support this, I think makes no sense. I think our, it is our time to say, we do not support this kind of arbitrary individual zoning that is brought forward by developers, so that they can, in fact, convert our town on our backs into something that gives them large profits at our expense.
Guess we're not quite ready to come to a vote. Yes, right in the corner here, front.
Jerry Weiss, Precinct 8. Just want a quick look at the process. Fair amount of time has already been spent by the planning board entertaining this proposal. I am pretty sure that some amount of time, probably a lot, has been spent by town staff, the planning department. Referring it back will require more of the same. I think the merits of this proposal should be debated here in town meeting, and passed or not passed. It does not belong back with the planning board. If they think it's a good one, they can bring it back themselves. I don't think it was on their docket before this came forward, and if they want to pursue it, they should do it on their own. I don't think we should send it back to them.
Are we ready to come to a vote? Yeah, I see a hand there, yellow hat.
John Cool, Precinct 2. I'm going to vote for referral, because contrary to some previous speakers, I don't believe that referral is happening to a board that has already supported it. It's a board that indeed has given it time for other consideration, and I think it needs that. And a number of the reasons that I think that it needs that is, people have pointed out that it abuts an RN zone. Indeed it does, as it abuts an RG zone. They note that they don't want to see high-rise apartments. Well, no one has yet proposed a high-rise apartment, so that remains an open question. The other fact that is overlooked by some, and perhaps not even known by others, is this property is across the street from UMass property, across the street from existing dormitories, across the street from a vacant lot that once housed an apartment building, and if we pursue our practice of not building enough housing in town, the university will build more, perhaps, and they may build it right there, perhaps, presenting a much less desirable view for some of the sort of abutters, when in reality, some of the abutters that we're talking, that we've heard from, are looking at it from on high. Let's all take the on-high view and say, we keep saying we must densify, we must have more housing, we must have more housing that's suitable for students, and the university must build it, and they don't. So I think we have to take some of these things and say, it isn't perfect, but we can consider it. And furthermore, one more reference to the motion to refer, we are motioning, moving for it, to refer it, to have further study. So bad an idea, I think not.
Yes, in the back there, second from the corner.
Pat Church, Precinct 5. I rise to suggest to the rest of town meeting that you not think about where you live necessarily, but there are people in this neighborhood that it's referred to, and I live in another neighborhood. I live on South Prospect Street, another sort of boundary neighborhood for the downtown. So that the, I guess the elephant in the corner in my neighborhood is not, in some ways, it is the university, because my street is full of students. But it is a boundary between the next street down, it is a boundary for the next street down, which is all families, some rented housing, but not to students as much. So as a bound, as a neighbor of, as a person who resides in a neighborhood that is in peril in the same way, I want to urge us to not refer, because as the previous speaker said, if they, if it comes, if they want to bring it back, they will bring it back. But we can send that message, saying we want to help people protect their neighborhoods. I would do this, I would say this for whoever's neighborhood felt like it resonated with me, that this is why I'm here this long, because I feel a, I feel more pressure actually every year as the town grows. When I moved into my house, almost 20 years ago, my little funky house, I was told that, oh, downtown will probably never be more than three or four stories. Well, it's changing, and the pressure is greater and greater. So please, I would ask you to please not refer back. Please let us take this vote. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Weber.
David Weber. I just want to clarify something, just real quickly, which was, is that the planning board brought you one article during this town meeting session, and that was inclusionary zoning. The rest of the zoning articles that you're hearing were brought by citizens. They're citizen petitions, not brought by the planning board. Our job is to review those and make a recommendation to you. But in fact, our intention was to bring you only one zoning article that you could concentrate on. I just want to be really clear with that going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, back there, Thurden from the, yes.
Sean Burke, Precinct 2. I'd just like to point out that we're spending all this time talking about this stuff, and it seems to me that the developers bring something to town hall, and town hall gives them the okay, it seems that way, and against the, you know, the concerns of the citizens. And there's one project that was passed almost two years ago now, and it's by the developer, the same developer that's putting up triangle towers there, is, they were supposed to be able to build student housing on Olympia Drive, and that hasn't even started yet. And this other thing we're talking about is about student housing close to the university, and yet, this other project hasn't even been put together, and it's in RF zoning, which you wouldn't have to change anything at all, you know? And I understand that the planning board didn't bring this plan up, but they gave it the nod, and I don't understand why they gave it the nod. I was at a select board meeting where it was presented to the select board, and I think because of the concerns of the citizens in the town hall, that the select board decided to send it, to refer it back. And then, the domino thing for the rest of you guys to defer it, but originally, you said okay to it, and I don't understand why we're even talking about this stuff when yet this other project that's going to house students hasn't even been started yet. Thanks.
Mr. Weber, did you want to respond to that?
I just want to point out that the previous speaker's statement that the planning board gave this the thumbs up is not correct. The planning board asked that it be referred to us, back to us, not that it be... There were two votes taken on successive meetings. The first meeting was not well-attended. The statutory notice was provided, but the abutters claimed that they didn't have sufficient notice despite that. Courtesy notices were sent out, and we held a second hearing. After hearing what changes were proposed to be made, the board took a second vote and asked that it be referred. That's what happened with the planning board.
Thank you. If anybody has anything to say, the only way that works is to raise your hand to be recognized. I do not want to hear murmurings and comments on what people say and what speakers say. Is that pretty clear? Good. Looking for some new hands. Yes, fourth row, right there.
Catherine Gilbert Espada, Precinct 6. I call the question.
Most of the previous question has been made and seconded. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then come to an immediate vote on the motion to refer. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. So I should explain, we're now voting on the motion to refer, which requires a majority. If this motion fails, we will need some new motion. I will first see if Mr. Gudera wants to make another motion, since he made the initial motion. If he doesn't, I'll call on someone else to make a motion. So we can't have a void, we can't have to deal with the article. But right now, we're just voting yes or no on the motion to refer, and it requires a majority. All those in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Noes have it, the motion to refer has failed. Mr. Gudera, do you want to make another motion? I don't even know where you're sitting.
Jerry Gudera, Precinct 9. I'm not sure what I want to do here.
Hang on, hang on. So do you have a, do you want to ask me what your choices are? Because I don't want you to start talking.
Sure.
Okay, so you can move in terms of the article, and then two-thirds vote yes, and it passes, and otherwise, no. You can make a motion to dismiss the article, and those are kind of your only choices. I think.
Well, then I move to dismiss the article.
Motion dismissed has been made and seconded. I hear a point of order from back. Wait for the microphone, please.
Richard Moore, Precinct 7. Doesn't the distinguished gentleman over here have the option to do nothing?
He could have done nothing, but somebody would, somebody else would have had to make a motion. In other words, there has to be a motion under the article, and we have to deal with it. That's the rules of Amherst Town Meeting. You can't, some towns let you just ignore something altogether, but we don't do that here. So somebody had to make a motion, and I accept his motion to dismiss, which was made and seconded. Do you wish to speak? I hear a point of order.
Sorry, Rolf Carlstrom, Precinct 10. If you offer to give the options, and there is a third option you do not give, I think that is a deficiency. I think someone else in the floor might have stood up and made a motion, should this person have decided to do nothing.
I believe that I did make it clear that if the petitioner, in this person, in this case, the town meeting member speaking, if the petitioner chose to not make any motion, that somebody else could. I believe I made that perfectly clear. So the motion to dismiss is on the floor, it's made and seconded. Do you wish to speak to that motion? You don't have to. Okay. Is there further discussion, or can we come to a vote? This requires a majority vote. I hear a point of order.
Jerry Weiss, Precinct 8. What happens if the motion to dismiss is defeated?
If the motion to dismiss is defeated, first of all, then somebody else would have to make a motion, and the only one I can think of that's left is in terms of the article. And I just want to point out, the article failing and the article being dismissed have the exact same implications, I feel. I would urge people, and this is something we talk about in the protocol of town meeting, don't vote against something when you're really in favor of it for political reasons. It's something, and I talked about this in my orientation session, and we really urge people not to do this. So I would say, you know, I don't want to go too much out into the world of giving advice, but the motion on the floor is the motion to dismiss. If you don't like this, dismissing is a pretty clear way to say you don't like it. And voting against dismissal, you are saying that you do like the article.
Point of order.
I hear a point of order.
Carol Gray, Precinct 7. Don't the rules of town meetings say that if an article is voted down, it's not to come back for two years?
So we talked, I'm sorry, we talked about that already. A negative vote and a dismissal have the same implications, and in either case, the petitioner cannot bring the article back for two years. Dismissal and negative vote mean the same thing in those terms.
Point of order.
Identify yourself, please.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. Is my understanding correct that, that under a motion to dismiss, that the merits of the article, that the moderator would be willing to hear the merits of the article?
I believe with very strong limits, because I believe we've already heard a lot under the motion to refer the merits. I would urge town meeting to limit your discussion and come to a vote on this as much as possible. Having said that, yes, I will recognize people if they want discussion, but people should also remember what the purpose of town meeting is, and what's on the floor before us. So the motion to dismiss is on the floor. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? I see a hand in the front row.
Larry Kelly, Precinct 5. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Is it okay if I look at town meeting from the podium? God. So I think we should abandon the book and plow as the town symbol logo and adopt the banana.
Is there further discussion before we come to a vote? I see a hand raised, discussion on the motion to dismiss. Back there, microphone. If you can rise, please do so, so the microphone can see you.
Richard Moore, Precinct 7. I guess I would, I'm going to urge town meeting to vote against the motion to dismiss, and I would ask town meeting to heed the words of Mr. Cool, who indicated that we are essentially telling this property owner that, well, we don't like this initial plan that you might have for this property. It's very possible that this property is then going to become eventually a university property, and then you'll have even less control over what happens there, and it will come off the tax rolls. So I guess I'm urging town meeting to think about its longer-term interests, which is to maintain some control over what is built there. And there are two stages to that, as I understand it, both this zoning article, but also what would happen under the, even if the zoning were to pass, what would happen under the changed zoning. The community would retain control over what is built there. I think the scenario that Mr. Cool has... I think the scenario that Mr. Cool has outlined is very possible if you dismiss this article. Thank you.
Can we come to a vote? I see a hand. You may speak. This has to be pertaining to the motion to dismiss.
Yes, I want to urge that we dismiss this particular motion.
I'm sorry, identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. Morianne Adams, Precinct 8. I have complete confidence in the planning board's being able to bring future projects to us that they believe are in our interests. I believe it is not useful to speculate on what the university may or may not do. I'm urging that we urge the university to develop public-private partnerships close to the campus, which would benefit the town and would benefit the campus. There are many options there. They don't ride on this vote, on the merits of this particular issue. I urge that we dismiss the motion and leave the door open for the future as it emerges and is brought to us by the planning board. Thank you.
Okay. You know, when I say is there further discussion, you don't have to raise your hands. Yes, I see a hand there in the back center.
Jonathan O'Keefe, Precinct 9. I call the previous question.
Motion, the previous question has been made and seconded. If you vote yes, we will come to an immediate vote on the motion to dismiss. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion, the previous question passes. I hear two-thirds. We now come to a vote on the motion to dismiss Article 23, which requires a majority. I hear a point of order. Identify yourself, please.
I've never done a motion... Rolf Carlstrom, Precinct 10. I don't know what meeting dismissed means. If we vote in favor of dismissing, we're done. If we vote against dismissing, then we go to the article. Is that correct?
If we vote against dismissal, then we need some other motion made, and I'm racking my brains. The only one I can think of is in terms of the article, so yes.
And anyone on the floor could do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We are now voting on the motion to dismiss, which requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to dismiss, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Moderator, here's a majority. We now move on to Article 24, and I call on Ms. Wentworth to make a motion. Quiet, please. That wasn't you, that was them. Quiet, please.
I move in terms of the article, Mr. Moderator.
Motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
This article would limit the size of buildings in the municipal parking district by virtue of the fact that parking would be required. When the master plan was being developed, there was no mention of five-story buildings being the infill for our downtown or our village centers. Certainly, no one talked about college dormitories being used for that purpose. After the completion of the Boltwood Parking Garage in 2003, the planning board tried to short-circuit any further discussion about parking.
Excuse me.
Pardon?
I don't care for the phrase "the planning board tried to short-circuit." I think you can talk about what the planning board chose to address or didn't choose to address, but I feel the negative connotations are unnecessary.
Yeah, okay. Tried to, chose to address parking in Amherst Downtown in a proposal brought to the 2008 Spring Town Meeting. The planning board introduced Article 27.
Hold the clock.
The planning board introduced Article 27, amending language in relation to the municipal parking district. Accordingly, in Section 7.42, it was stated, and I quote, "The purpose of this district is to encourage the dense development of mixed-use buildings and pedestrian spaces in Amherst Center. Toward that end, provision of necessary off-street parking for the majority of uses within the MP district is assumed to be a public responsibility," end of quote. However, Town Meeting disagreed with this assumption and voted to delete that last sentence. You might be interested in the underlining in the second paragraph and the information about dormitories in the municipal parking district. Article 7 of the 2009 Spring Town Meeting, the planning board asked for and received, with some modifications, a big expansion of the MPD. It was extended northward.
I hope that they did a large bit for me. I can't read it.
Any chance you can enlarge it? We do...
I don't know how to operate this.
Can you try and enlarge it?
Let me put the map up.
As an aside, this isn't, by any means, the first time this has happened. I urge everybody who's planning a presentation as overheads to come early to Town Meeting. IT staff is here, and they can help you get your presentation right, which makes it better. So anybody who has a presentation should think about doing that. Thank you.
So the MPD was extended northward from Kellogg Street to Triangle Street, and then east along Triangle Street to include properties owned by Jeffrey Brown and W.D. Coles Incorporated, a Jones Enterprise. On the north side of Kellogg Avenue, it was also extended east to include three rental houses belonging to Jones Properties LP. On the other side of Kendrick Park, the district now runs along North Pleasant Street, up past Kellogg Street. Kendrick Park is also included in this district. April 2008, Town Meeting rejects town responsibility to provide parking in the municipal parking district. April 2009, expansion of municipal parking district. Six months later, in October 2009, application for a five-story Boltwood place was approved within the MPD. No parking provided. Four months later, in February 2010, the master plan was adopted by the planning board. Ten months after that, in September 2010, the university and town signed an agreement to expand and improve housing via the Gateway Redevelopment Project from Mass Avenue to the Triangle Street intersection. August/September 2013, application for Olympia Place, a five-story building to be constructed on Olympia Drive, was submitted and approved. No parking provided. Right on top of that approval, in September/November 2013, the Kendrick Place application was submitted and approved. No parking provided. September 2014, the first of four public forums on parking was held. October 2014, one East Pleasant Street application was submitted. No parking provided.
Ms. Wentworth, you need to finish your...
Here we are in the May of 2015. What can we expect to take place this year and in 2016 if we do nothing? The issue of parking needs to be addressed now more than ever. Please support this article.
Thank you. Can we get the motion back on the screen? I hear a point of order. Hands raised there. Can we get a microphone?
Hilda Greenmont, Precinct 1. Several people wanted to be able to read the, one of the earlier slides, which showed a paragraph underlined, which was made larger, and we didn't have a chance to read that.
I'm not going to go back. It's really up to the presenter to have a good presentation and to have papers to support it, and she was given extra time, and I think we need to move on. And I now call on the planning board. Mr. Rosnoy. Ms. Wentworth, I think you have to relinquish the podium. You can stay forward if you want.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard Rosnoy from Precinct 9, and also, on behalf of planning board, I move to refer this article back to the board for further study.
Motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
That study will be in the context of all of the other parking studies and work already underway. As many of you may recall, at the very first session of Town Meeting, I presented to you the completed transportation plan for the town. It has now been accepted by the select board. The transportation plan has, as one of its major components, the issue of parking, which needs to be addressed. Another issue that's happening in town, many of you have been participating in the parking forums that have been well-attended. They've produced valuable information and many diverse ideas and alternatives as to how to proceed about parking, especially downtown. The parking forums will combine the information that they've come up with with information in the transportation plan, and those will be combined so that the select board and the town manager will determine how to proceed to address the town's parking needs in general. As you've just seen by the petitioner, it has been Town Meeting's intention to create the municipal parking district, and it was this Town Meeting which approved expansion of the parking district into the north end of the downtown. The punitive inflexibility and overly simplistic nature of the amendments proposed in Article 24 will be reasons themselves to refer this article, along with the...
I'm listening carefully, and he was referring to the wording and the language of the article and not to a speaker, and I will allow it. Is this a new point of order? Because I already said I will allow what he said to continue. Okay, you can use the microphone.
I'm concerned about distinctions. John Fox, Precinct 10. I think you ruled earlier that the word equitable was troublesome to you. This presenter is using the word punitive. It seems to me that equitable is a much softer term than punitive, so I'm wondering how you're making these distinctions. I thought equitable was a perfectly legitimate comment.
I don't remember exactly what you're referring to, so I'm not going to address it. All I'm going to say is the speaker may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The inflexible and simplistic nature of the amendments proposed in Article 24 are reasons themselves to refer this article, along with the negative impacts the amendments would have on downtown, including the creation of non-conformities. Basically, this article would create, would make existing downtown residential uses that have not provided two parking spaces, every one of those buildings would now be a non-conforming use. A wide range of options exist, and better ways to meet the parking needs for new residences can be developed. This will be a priority for the planning board going forward, and it will be a priority for the transportation task force going forward. The planning board strongly recommends this article be referred back for further study.
Motion on the floor now is the motion to refer, which requires a majority vote, and we will try and limit our discussion as much as possible to the pros and cons of referral. And now I call on Mr. Wald for the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The select board voted four to zero with one absent to recommend referral of the motion. The planning of the 1950s and 60s was based on a concept of abundance. If you look at what the American Planning Association said in 1954 about shopping malls, it could not imagine ever having too much parking. A different world. In 1966, the American Association of Planning Officials worried that even though downtown residential parking needs were lower than suburban ones, we still needed to act energetically to provide more space. Nevertheless, with the increasing reliance on automobiles, there's little to reason to believe that in the future, people will be willing to forego the convenience of owning a car for the dubious privilege of living in the central city. So again, the idea was more parking, and it's a very different world today. They back then did not have on their radar screen the energy crisis, the environment, climate change. Right now, we'd rather live downtown than levitown in many cases. We're trying to wean ourselves away from dependence on the private automobile. And so Martin Smart Growth Planning, as represented in the Amherst planning documents that you've voted on here over the past years and the master plan, has tried to stress smart growth principles of infill and density in the village centers. In large part...
Mr. Wald, you try and tie this into the pros and cons of the motion to refer.
I am. Thank you. The point is that these things are part of a larger package. If we're trying to preserve open space, which is a major principle of the master plan, that requires infill in built-up areas. One of the ways to achieve infill in built-up areas is not to waste precious and expensive land on surface-grade parking that's provided. We've found through our surveys that most of the park needs people feel are for retail uses and visitors. Residential parking in the downtown built-up areas has been accommodated by the present system and through alternatives provided, such as private parking, private parking in the streets, and so forth. I just want to refer you, and again, I think this is relevant, to some of the points in the master plan that apply here. The transportation portion says, "Use zoning bylaws, subdivision regulations, and permitting board project review to advance transportation goals. These include limited parking. Adjust existing regulations to help reduce the number of cars in the downtown area. Expand the municipal parking district," which we have done. "Remove or reduce parking requirements in the zoning bylaw for most residential and commercial development in the downtown area in order to increase density, maximize the area available for residential and commercial development, and create a vital pedestrian atmosphere. Increase shared parking and off-site parking for residential and commercial development."
Again, I need you to tie it into the motion to refer.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I thought I was. The point is that we didn't do things lightly here in Amherst. We thought that by reducing the municipal parking requirement, we were enhancing sustainable principles of growth. The point is, then, that this measure reverses global and local progressive zoning policies. It's number, that's number one. Number two, it's a simple fix, I think, in the sense that it...
Give you one more sentence, because I interrupted.
Two out of three, okay. Number two, it's only one part of a larger picture. The transportation plan, the parking forums, provide existing means to address this. And number three, again, I think it's...
Excuse me. It's been made clear that he ran out of time. I said I would give him a little more time. Okay, you have another point of order. You may identify yourself and make your point of order.
Rolf Carlstrom, Precinct 10. In the entire time, I don't think I've heard the word referral once in a comment about addressing referral. I think that is pretty significant. Thank you. Thank you.
I hear your point of order. I think it's clear to most people out there that I am listening, and I am concerned with that, too, and you have to trust me that I will interrupt when I think it's time to interrupt. So I'm sorry, you just have to, I already made it clear to him to stick with it. I felt he was barely within my limits, and I let him continue. So that, so that's all I have to say about your point of order. I hear another point of order here in the front.
We're Carol Gray, Precinct 7. We're 22 seconds over the time limit, and I've seen many people of different persuasion, of different perspectives gavelled in five seconds.
Okay. I don't think I've done that. I think I've been letting everybody finish their sentences, and I've been equally fair or unfair to everybody. And again, if your point of order has to do with the clock or have to do what the speaker is saying, and I've already addressed it, I would ask you not to make that point of order again. Mr. Wald, you have another 20 or 30 seconds to finish up and tie it into the motion to refer.
I'll use fewer. My point was simply that because it's part of a larger picture, a single fix isn't the way to go right now. We have the transportation plan in hand, we have the parking forums, there's a larger process, and that's the reason we're advocating referral. We value citizen concerns that the previous speaker and the petitioner have brought up, and we think they're best addressed in that larger context over time rather than here on the floor of the Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Ms. Ratner, I think? Yes.
The Finance Committee recommends referral of this article to the Planning Board by a vote of six to zero with one vacancy for the reasons that we stated in our report.
Thank you. So again, the motion to refer requires a majority for passage. If it fails and we are dealing with the main motion in terms of the article, that would require a two-thirds for passage. Is there discussion before we come to a vote on the motion to refer? And yes, I see a hand, second row, right here.
I am not going to vote
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Janet Chevyn, Precinct 7. I am not going to vote to refer because I think the petitioner has brought forth an article that is worthy of our consideration, and I am going to vote for it. And I am also going to raise an issue once more about something said by a previous speaker. A previous speaker said specifically, "Refer to the master plan that you voted," and we did not vote on the master plan. It never came before Town Meeting. So why Town Meeting is continually referring, hearing from the Planning Board and the Select Board that this is in terms of the master plan? We did not approve the master plan of this body.
Yes, third row, right in the center there.
Chris Riddle, Precinct 2. This is a very big, messy, complicated question that really needs to be referred back to the Planning Board. I, you know, I'm an architect, I have been involved in this kind of development in the past, and two parking spaces per unit is just incompatible with the, with the town center. I think we should not vote for that, but I think we do have to do something. It really seems to me that the municipal parking district, the regulations around the municipal parking district particularly, in the context of, of, of transportation work planning that's going on now, needs, and we need to look at it again. It has to be looked at carefully, and the Planning Board plans to do so. We need to refer this back to the Planning Board because we don't want to make a broad-brush, categoric, two-car parking space per apartment judgment right here on the floor while all this stuff is going on. Vote for, I encourage you to vote to defer.
Yes, right here, third row in the aisle.
Carol Gray, Precinct 7. I was in Town Meeting in 2008 and 2009 when the planning department brought a zoning article asking us to expand the parking district, which eliminated parking requirements. I remember asking Mr. Tucker at that time, "Is there any development that you're aware of that would be impacted by us removing this, these parking restrictions?" He said, "No." He also said that there was adequate parking, and he referred to a study, I believe it was the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission study, if I'm not mistaken, which said there was adequate parking, and this was the argument for eliminating the requirement to have enough parking for any new buildings. Our planning department is supposed to plan for our future, not be surprised by developments that then transform our town in the way that many citizens are very, very unhappy with. To then be proposing a parking garage, and we'll come back probably to ask for a million dollars or more to fund that, is not only poor planning, but it leaves Town Meeting feeling duped. I urge you to vote yes on this. That there will be non-conforming structures is only because the planning, sorry. Vote no on the motion to refer. Vote yes on the underlying article. The only reason there will be non-conforming structures in town is because the planning department failed to do adequate planning in 2008 and 2009 when they urged us to eliminate parking requirements. It's okay to have non-conforming buildings. We have them in many places in town. Perhaps new developments that come in in the next year or so will at least have parking, and we'll have a fighting chance to not create another million-dollar garage. But we shouldn't be put in the position where the planning department urges zoning changes that then require us to do things in later years that they could have seen coming and deliberately misled us to believe something different. Vote no on the motion to refer and yes on the underlying article.
Excuse me. I, on behalf of the Speaker, I don't want to hear anything about deliberate misleading of anything that goes to motives. It is just not appropriate in Town Meeting. Is that clear?
It's my opinion.
Okay. It is not acceptable, and I will interrupt anybody else who, who follows that pattern. Mr. Masanti.
Thank you. I would refer members of Town Meeting to a, a portion of the Planning Board report that I found particularly helpful, and that's a history of the municipal parking district. And in that, on page two of the Planning Board report, it talks about the history that way back in 1986, residential uses were added to those categories exempted for requirement to provide parking in the downtown district. So it's been in place since, since the 1980s. It's been talked about tonight about smart growth principles and the need for a good process on this and other articles. The Select Board and the Planning Board came together and jointly sponsored a series of, of forums over this past winter on, on parking issues, because it's clearly an issue of concern to the, to the, to those boards, but more importantly, to the, to the community. So that process is still in its early, early phases. In the midst of that, drastically changing the parking requirements so that there's more asphalt in downtown than there is commercial or residential space, I think is a fundamental, a fundamental mistake that would be made. I would urge Town Meeting, refer the matter to the Planning Board and allow the community conversations about the transportation plan in its entirety, and specifically about parking to go through its normal deliberate process and come back to you with more, I hope, comprehensive proposals to address these issues.
Thank you. On the aisle right there, third row.
Tim Neal, Precinct 4. I call the question.
Motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will come to an immediate vote on the motion to refer, which is before you. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
I don't hear two-thirds. I think we need to talk a little more. Yes, actually, right here in the corner.
Mary Wentworth, Precinct 5. I don't know how many of you live in the downtown area without a car. I do. There is insufficient transportation infrastructure to make that possible for somebody who has a family, who has a job in Amherst, to live in town without owning an automobile. And I think that the focus of the town committees, Select Boards, has been way too much on encouraging development and not bringing along the bus system, the other systems that we need to be able to function so that, in fact, people can get weaned off the car culture, but you can't just ask them to go cold turkey. Another problem is that we have been unwilling to lower the speed limits in town so that bicyclists would be willing to get on the roads. Many, many people have bicycles in their basements, but they are too afraid to ride them on town roads because the drivers of the automobiles drive them too fast, and they feel it's too dangerous. So we have a lot of work to do. This article gives us the space to do it.
Yes, second row, right here.
Jennifer Tau, Precinct 10. I went to the parking forum in the fall of last year. There were many people there, to a person, everyone expressing their grave concern that there is insufficient parking in downtown. Following those forums, the Planning Board approved One East Pleasant Street with no parking. So the, you have the forums, but, you know, then decisions are made that ignore everything that's said during public meetings. And I would ask where the people who live at One, you know, at Kendrick Place are going to park. It's all well and good to say that we don't think people should have cars, but they do, and they have no place to park them. I'm all for bicycles, but there's many months of the year when bike riding in Amherst is not an option. So I just have to respond to being told that, you know, there's forums for us to express our concerns about parking, but they're consistently ignored.
Yes, down in the front row there.
Denise Barber at Precinct 9. Would somebody, would someone be able to give us information on when Kendrick Place is completed, and if and when One East Pleasant Street is completed? How many new residents there will be of the downtown? And what percentage of those individuals can reasonably be expected to have cars which will also reside in the downtown?
Anybody have those figures? Want to tackle it? Further discussion? Okay, yes, in the corner there.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. In my hand I have a memorandum addressed to Mr. Kyle Wilson from Mr. Sean Kelly, Senior Project Manager of Van Ness and Associates. This is a, a parking study prepared for the litigation regarding One East Pleasant Street. Let me read you Mr. Sean Kelly's conclusions. For peak parking demand, apartments, this is only for One, One East Pleasant Street. One, I think people can make their own calculations regarding Kendrick Place. For the retail space, weekday midday peak demand, 20 cars. Weekday evening peak demand, six vehicles. For the apartments, of 84 units. Weekday midday peak demand, 71. Weekday evening peak demand, 101. There are presently 42 parking spaces in the, in the carriage shops. If One East Pleasant Street is completed as proposed, there will be 36 parking spaces, which is considerably less than the town and the Archipelago Organization's own expert claims are needed. His claim is based on parking generation from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Now, I think this is a low-ball figure myself. There is a gentleman who was interviewed with regard to this matter, who has eight housing units, no, eight residential units in the downtown, manages 25 units, residential units for the last 19 years. This gentleman has testified that he has more than one, on average, more than one parking space per bedroom. Kendrick Place has 104 bedrooms. I think there are going to be 168 units. 168 would be the number if you do two per parking space for One East Pleasant Street. The number of units, the number of bedrooms, I think, is 240 or so. Please. This is, this is the, the words of the expert hired by the town and Archipelago. The demand is far in excess of any parking that is available or will be available. And that is the problem that some of us are willing to confront, but apparently others are not. I think we need to confront it. I think we need to vote against the motion to refer and vote for the article.
Ready to come to a vote? Yes, from the Select Board.
I am supporting referral back, and actually, the last speaker presented a lot of the reasons why I would support referral back. I think there is a problem with our current municipal parking district bylaw, and I think the Planning Board is well aware of that and has committed to work on this quite diligently. As the Town Manager said, there's a history to this bylaw, and it goes back before the current development pattern with, where we are encouraging mixed-use developments in downtown and village centers. So I think the municipal parking district bylaw may have served us well in the past, and I think there's some common agreement that it's not the right set of requirements for the current development that we would see happening downtown. And I would really like to see my Planning Board and the excellent citizens on that board and our planning staff have a go at it to craft something that will really fit for the current developments that we're seeing. I don't believe that what's in front of us, while it's addressing a problem that we acknowledge is there, is the right solution, and I'd like to spend more time and have a more thorough process to get the right number of parking spaces per unit figured out, and I have confidence that we'll be able to do that together.
Yes, third row, right in the center there.
Meg Gage, Precinct 1. I try to discipline myself to talk once a year. This is it. Didn't plan on it. I'm in great sympathy with the motion. I also am in sympathy with what Mr. Riddle said. Can I refer to him, the man over there in the blue?
Thank you.
And I do understand it's complicated. I'm not quite sure where this will end up, but I would like to request that when you have your hearings on this, you invite by mail everyone in Town Meeting so we know when to show up and listen. I think it is complicated, and there are, it is important to reduce driving, but it doesn't reduce driving if you simply eliminate the ability of people to park their cars. And, you know, it's the complex reasons why people drive too much and why they don't use the buses, but the fact is, they don't. So that's just reality, and we'd really, I really hope whatever turns up here, as sympathetic as I am for the motion, that we, you invite us to participate or listen, eavesdrop in the conversations.
Thank you.
With something we get in the mail, like we get our packets. Because if you don't have Because if you don't happen to read the right column in the newspaper or look on the website, you miss the hearing. And you only get a letter if it's your next-door event.
Okay, pros and cons in the motion to refer. Second from the aisle over there, third row from the back.
Janet McGowan, Precinct 8. I talked to the developer or the owner of Boltwood Place, which is that white cube, and whatever your feelings are about it, and I asked how many, there's six apartment units, and how many people, how many units had cars? And there were three cars, like, three units had a car and three didn't. And those three units were renting spaces from the underground garage at $600 a year. I just offered that up as information.
And now, the person right next to you, because that's really who I meant to call first.
Ruth Heser, Precinct 3. I feel that, I really understand the argument that we need to develop a very thoughtful and complex planning, zoning for addressing parking along with a lot of other issues. And I expect that process to continue, and I will vote for this article as a stop-gap measure that gives the planning board a tool in order to be able to say to a developer who wants to make a mixed-use building, yes, you do need to provide parking. Because now, they can't say that. They're not allowed to say, "You need parking." They're not allowed to say, "This doesn't make sense to have so many units and no parking." At least, that's how I understand it. Because there are no parking requirements for those uses. I see this as a tool that will protect the town, because I think that, right now, we don't have that tool. We don't have a tool that will require developments in the center of town that have a lot of residences to, for the developer to plan for parking. I don't believe that the town and the citizens of the town should be responsible for paying for a building to provide parking for dense, build dense development for residential uses in town. I think that that's not an equitable, not a fair, not a wise choice. I think that the developers should have to take responsibility for providing for parking for their residences. So, and we, that is not the case now. So, and I, we can vote, you know, when the planning board comes back with a great, well-thought-out plan for the downtown that includes parking, I will vote for it. And it will probably be more complex, and it will be more subtle and very useful. But right now, I feel like we really need this as a protection for our planning board and for our downtown.
Coming to a vote on the motion to refer. Yeah, right here, second row. Wait for the microphone.
Paula Di Stefano, Precinct 1. I call the question.
Motion, I hear a second. Motion and previous question has been made and seconded. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then come to an immediate vote on the motion to refer. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Moderator hears two-thirds. We now come to a vote on the motion to refer Article 24 to the planning board. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Moderator does not hear a majority. The motion to refer fails. I hear people doubting it. We will have a standing vote. I do not currently see 15 cards for a tally. I guess I do now, we will have a tally vote. Can I make sure I have six tellers up here? Everyone else, just stay in your seats and wait for instructions. Could the six tellers please come forward? Yes. Okay, everybody needs to be quiet and pay attention, please. We are, no, quieter than that. Even quieter. Thank you. We are using tally card number five, which was in your original sets. If you have it, you must pass it to the aisle where the tellers are collecting. If you don't have it, you must get a blank card and print your name legibly. You must stay in your seat until the tellers have released your row or your card will not be counted. I see two tellers. I see two more tellers, and I see two tellers. You may proceed with the telling. That's accounting. I hear a point of order, okay? I need everyone to be quiet while we get a point of order. Nani, can we get a, or Aaron, can we get a microphone? There's a point of order right in the center of the back there. And there's another point of order that trumped your point of order. Hang on.
Janet Keller, Precinct 1. Could you clarify, it was, there was a lot of confusion going on. Could you please clarify what it is that people are voting on here that I think that got a little lost in the shuffle?
Absolutely. And yet again, another example of a really good point of order. So, we are voting on whether or not to refer Article 24 to the planning board. Planning board. A yes vote means you want to refer it back, and we have then finished with Article 24 for the evening. A no vote, if you don't want to refer, then the motion to referral goes away, and the initial motion in terms of the article is on the floor for discussion. Yes, refer. No, don't refer. Discuss the article some more. Is that clear?
On the motion to refer Article 24, there were 87 yes votes and 91 no votes. So the motion to refer has failed. The main motion in terms of the article is now on the floor. Are we ready to come to a vote? We've had plenty of discussion. Yes, right there in the center.
Hi, Gary Tardikoff, Precinct 9. And I'm part of the tradition of talking once a meeting. I'm concerned trying to figure out who the planning board represents. I've been here for -- this is my second year. I'll finish. This is my second year.
I'd like you to try and focus on the pros and cons of Article 24, please, okay?
In trying to understand Item 24, we had to listen to Mr. O'Connor try to give us an answer to a simple question about how many parking spaces came from these two developments. When the previous person asked the question, people on the planning board laughed and didn't answer. They don't have to answer any -- do they? As someone from the select board just said about her planning board, I'm saying, is the planning board supposed to be responsive to me and the town meeting, or are they responsive to someone else? To the select board? So I'm asking who?
Yes, back corner there.
Felicity Callahan, Precinct 9. I want -- oh, she's standing up now. I really appreciated the comments from the lady with the blue blouse. And she said them so much better than I am going to be able to say. But I was reading the planning board's report to us, and they had a public hearing about this warrant article about parking. And the zoning subcommittee -- I'm now reading from their report on page 5. The zoning subcommittee presented its analysis of Article 24. They said that the planning board was very cognizant of downtown parking as a public concern, but it was not clear that there was a problem to address. There might be, but the community did not have the data to demonstrate that a parking problem involving residential uses existed. So we are now having a very nice, well-thought-out proposal for us. I strongly suggest that we vote yes on this warrant article. And then the planning board will have something specific to work through and with and modify and make nuanced changes to and bring it back to us, as was so well stated by the lady with the blue blouse. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Rosnoy.
Richard Rosnoy, Precinct 9. For anyone who attended the parking forums, you may be aware that the lack of data refers to the fact that there is no current data for parking in Amherst. The last recent report is from 2008, which was referred to earlier tonight, and that was correct, by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. The whole reason for these parking forums and for the study of parking that the planning board recognizes needs to be done and the addressing of parking in the zoning regulations that the planning board recognizes needs to be done is because there is none of this recent data on parking. Since 2008, there has been considerable growth in downtown. There has been considerable loss of parking spaces, so that the data from 2008 is now inaccurate, but it's all we have to go on. It's for all of these very reasons that many of the comments made previously during the previous discussion supported the motion to refer, which, of course, we're not discussing here. But it's for those reasons and the reasons involving the need for a comprehensive addressing of parking that a planning board made its vote as it did.
Yes, right in the center there.
Jim Oldham, Precinct 5. Having well exceeded my once-per-year -- I was resisting speaking on this, but as I hear people talk, and particularly those at the front of the room, it's as if we were surprised by these new residential developments, that they kind of popped up like mushrooms after a spring rain. And that's not the way it happened. As I recall, we were persuaded to vote a series of zoning changes that brought about mixed-use developments. And I'm here puzzled by the people who are saying, "We need to do these studies. We need to understand parking. We need to know how resident -- what -- why weren't we asked to do these studies years ago?" It seems to me that there's this -- a deep contradiction. On the one hand, we're being asked to let our appointed boards figure it out, move cautiously, and so on. But we didn't move it all cautiously when we chose to rezone town so that they could build Kendrick Place and to rezone downtown so that they could build Boltwood Place and One East Pleasant without parking. How is it that that was overlooked? As a previous speaker suggested, the planning department is paid by taxpayers to look ahead toward these things. But what the planning department and the planning board have done is encouraged us to make some serious mistakes. What this article does is perhaps imperfect, but it reverses the situation we have now, as other speakers have said, that allow more mushrooms to pop up without parking spaces underneath them. And it invites -- and it doesn't in any way stop or get in the way of the work that is currently going on for planning studies. And like other speakers have said, I would welcome a better plan coming forward that could replace this. But in the meantime, we have two choices. We have the law we have now that says you can build a big residential development downtown and provide no parking. Or this one that may be imperfect, might not be quite the right number of units, of spaces per unit, but it says something. You have to provide some. So what do we want now for the next three months, six months, 12 months, 18 months, whatever time it takes to complete the studies and develop a better plan? What we have now? Vote this down. Something a little bit more conservative, a little more cautious? Let's support it. I think I'll do the latter.
In the red/pink there, yes.
Thank you. Mandy Jo Hanke, Precinct 5. I am going to urge the meeting to vote this down. I want the meeting to consider what they want downtown to look like. Requiring additional parking for residential units in downtown won't address the parking issue for visitors to our town or for residents who don't live in those units, because all of that parking can be marked private and only allowed for the people who live there. It's not going to address the issue of someone coming from South Amherst or North Amherst or Cushman who can't find parking right now, because they're not going to be able to park in those residential slots that are paid for by builders and designated for the residents of those buildings. Secondly, I like a downtown that is walkable, that is not covered in pavement, that when you're standing on Pleasant Street, North Pleasant, South Pleasant, you've got buildings, retail buildings that you can go into, walk-ups you can go into, restaurants you can go into. I don't want to stand on Pleasant Street or Amity Street or Main Street and stare at paved parking. If we pass this and more residential or mixed-use buildings are built with all of the required parking, those bottom levels will be paved parking. It will look not like our downtown looks right now, whether before or after the buildings that are currently being built look. It's going to be more parking, more covered land. And that's not the kind of downtown I want. I don't want a downtown that has parking only for residents that live in certain buildings. I want the parking, if we're going to provide parking, I want that parking to be available to all residents of Amherst, not the ones that happen to just rent or live in the building where the parking is found. So I urge town meeting to vote against this article. Thank you.
Yeah, way down there in the corner, yes.
Carl Allen, Precinct 6. Let's see. I'm a regional planning student at UMass.
Hold the mic really close to your mouth, yeah.
Okay. I'm a regional planning student at UMass. I live in town. I own a house out in Echo Hill. And what I would like to say is parking is not free. Developers don't pay for parking. Developers build the parking, and they roll it into the rents, or they roll it into the condo prices. And what you're doing by requiring parking in the downtown area is making any new development unaffordable for the vast majority of people that this meeting claims they want to live in town. So I would urge you to vote no.
Yes, right on the aisle here.
Jeff Lauter, Precinct 6. I call the previous question.
Motion for the previous questions are made and seconded. We will now come to immediate vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then come to a vote on the main motion in terms of the article for Article 24. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderators in doubt, we're going to have a little more discussion. Yes, right in the aisle there. Yes.
Paul Kaplan, Precinct 6. I don't recall hearing a report from the planning board or the select board about this warrant, this item.
Well, when they -- I will see if they want to respond after the speaker I just recognized. I feel that they did discuss the motion to refer in context of the main article, so I sort of feel that they did report on it. But I will see if they want to talk anymore. But first, I'm going to recognize the speaker here. So you may proceed.
Jacquelum Idana, Precinct 5. I'm going to vote in favor of this motion. I feel that this is an important piece to the parking problem we have in Amherst. I had been a town meeting member many, many years ago, moved out of town, came back, and this is my second year. And when I first started with town meeting, I went to city hall, or town hall, because I really wanted to understand the bigger picture. And I had talked to a lot of people who were really suffering because of the taxes being high. And I said, "But why are you building these huge buildings?" And they said, "Well, it's because they wanted more tax revenues." And then I said, "Okay, but you're doing it without parking as part of it." And they said, "Yeah." And then I said, "Well, that means you're going to force us to build a parking garage." Yep, that was pretty much it in a nutshell. So it feels like it's not going to help with the taxes, but it also creates a huge problem in terms of parking. I'm really lucky, because I live in a building that, when it was built, required parking. I live right in town. And I really feel that this article addresses this issue very clearly, and I think not voting for it really sends a very strong message to me. I just feel that we really have to support this article.
Yes, Mr. Rosnoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will take the opportunity to make some comments on the article, the underlying article directly. I refer you, first of all, to my prior comments about the Transportation Task Force and all of its good work and all of the good people on that task force who have worked so diligently, including addressing the issue of parking. And Jeffrey Begg and Christine Brester from the Planning Department, who have been working so diligently with the parking forums that have been occurring and are in the process of collecting the data regarding parking in the town. Officially, I refer you to the planning board official comments on Article 24, the report to town meeting from the planning board. But I particularly address pages 3 and 4 and note that this article would remove all sense of any flexibility in terms of how downtown would look. I refer you to a prior comment from a gentleman in the corner who noted that parking is not free. Not only -- there are some points that he raised, but there are other points in addition to what he raised regarding what the cost is to developers. What this would do is make development more expensive, and it would create a type of a downtown that it would be interesting if town meeting were to approve that type of downtown. It would mean that more wealthy people who are able to afford automobiles would be able to rent more expensive apartments, because fewer apartments would be able to be built, and each unit then would be prorated more expensive. Not only that, the developers don't pay for parking, as was noted. It's you who are going to be paying for the parking, and you reduce taxes. The planning board, a while back, had a sort of a mini workshop on some materials that were written by some authors on the effects of parking on urban areas. And this was pointed out very clearly. In the planning board's report, there are some numbers cited about the cost of a parking space around $3,000 to $10,000. Nationwide, those costs can be more in the order of $30,000 per parking space. These are taxes that we're not going to be receiving. Very often, a lot of comments have come back about the two large buildings downtown, which have been approved according to the existing bylaws on the books. It almost feels like each one of us on the planning board should have received from somebody, perhaps the town meeting steering committee, an albatross that we can hang around our neck for having approved those developments. The fact is, those developments were approved according to the zoning bylaw as it exists and according to what we were allowed to do. So the planning board generally moved to refer and did not move on the underlying article as such.
Looking for brand-new hands? Yes, right here, second row, right in the center. Wait for the microphone, please.
Philip Helsner, Precinct 3. I've grown up in Chicago, a very large city, where parking and buildings comes together when anything new development is created, because parking is an issue. And if you're creating greater density, it does not alleviate the need for parking, but creates more of a need. And frequently, the developers do shoulder some of the cost for that. They have parking within building, under the buildings. I think by suggesting that we shoulder the burden puts Amherst at a bit of an unfair burden for the parking. I think greater density requires greater parking and/or greater public transportation. But I think the parking frequently comes first before the building, and in this case, the buildings have come first, and now we have to figure out the parking issue from there. I'm going to vote for the issue.
Yes, way in the back there.
Richard Morris, Precinct 7. The petitioner, I think, raised an issue and then kind of didn't pass it off, but had her own answer for it, which was, how do you drive a community in which the community essentially lives a lifestyle that has a smaller carbon footprint? How do you make that? How do you get that started? And I would say, I have a vision of a person who lives in downtown Amherst, who realizes that he or she can then walk to the library, to the movie theater, where you can see shows from out of town, who essentially starts to realize, hey, I can do a lot of things that I want to do without using my car. And then you start to have a political situation start to develop, where people who are living downtown say, "We want a grocery store downtown." Well, that's an economic situation. But you also then have a political constituency for public transportation, where you then have a concentration of people who can use public transportation to then go out to the malls by bus or over to North Hampton. And after a while, you start -- this starts to snowball, where you have people who are living in Amherst, who are not using their car. They might even decide they could use a Zipcar maybe once a week or once every two weeks. Now, I thought this was part of the idealism of Amherst, that we wanted to have living and lifestyles with a lower carbon footprint, with a smaller carbon footprint. How do we drive that? We drive that partly by having people live in residences where they are living in high concentration, and they can walk. And they find out, lo and behold, they don't need a car. Thank you.
Let's see. Yes, yes, you.
Mary Streeter, Precinct 8. I think we're really going to have some excellent, at least anecdotal, statistics on parking in September, once Kendrick Place opens. And I'm not sure when this company that's bringing in all these data analyst people to the downtown, is that going to be starting in September as well? I have a feeling that these people will be taking up a lot of the parking spaces downtown. They'll certainly have visitors as well. And I'd like, when we listen to, there are possible alternatives to our parking. We have to be realistic here. It's nice to be idealistic, but we have to be realistic. People should know that on page 68 in the Finance Committee booklet, we're still paying for Boltwood Garage until 2020. I'm not in the mood to pay for New Garage when developers could put a parking level underneath their buildings. I'd like to see this particular article passed, so that it will be in place for any future buildings that will be proposed between now and when the planning board gets back to us.
Okay, we've been discussing this a long time. If you have new things to bring to the floor, we'd appreciate it. Way over there, against the wall.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Brissette, Precinct 6. I live about probably a mile or so from town, and I would love to bike, but I don't feel that comfortable biking, except going on the bike path, because we don't really have a good bike lane on Route 9, which I would have to take, or Southeast Street onto Route 9, which, you know, I don't consider those pedestrian or bike-friendly. I would -- this article, I believe, is sending us in the wrong way. I think we need to be a lot more forward-thinking. I would like to see the planning board and other committees not permit any more parking downtown and instead concentrate their efforts on better public transportation, including trolleys, more use of all the paved parking areas on Amherst College land and UMass land, try to advocate for more delivery services, more services like Uber, more Zipcars that previous speakers mentioned. And a previous speaker also mentioned the And a previous speaker also mentioned Chicago, which my wife's family's there. We go there every year regularly. And I think we do not want the Chicago traffic here. It is, from different studies, it's the third worst in the country, and it is a nightmare. We really want to eliminate any more parking, get rid of cars from downtown, think much more forward. Previous speakers have mentioned all the green benefits. I mean, the young people who we want to keep in town, most of them can't afford a car. They don't want cars. They want to use services like Uber, taxis, P-Port services, or they want to walk or bike. I really think we need to start thinking much more forward, and I really hope we vote this down and advocate for no more parking downtown and make creative uses of public transportation and other existing lots on the outskirts of town. Thank you.
Yes, over here.
Jane Wald, Precinct 1. I participated in all three of the recent parking forums, and I hope many of you did too. I know scores and scores of people participated. The parking forums were quite thorough, asked a lot of good questions, and accommodated a very great deal of input from the community. I think this article is premature. We have, still have a lot to do with the data picked up from those parking forums and with, from transportation studies. And I think it would be in the best interests of our town to be able to work with the data that's already in process. And I would urge you to wait until we have some sense of how all that material is going to work together. Thank you.
Yes, in the white shirt, right there.
Gabor Lukács, Precinct 10. I realize that this article is not about parking. It's about stopping irresponsible development downtown, or at least making it much harder. So I will vote for it because I don't want irresponsible development and further development downtown. Thank you.
And right there in the center. No.
Tracy Lee Bochillier, Precinct 6. I can give you a very personal, clear view of what happens when we have students living in apartments. If you guys remember, I live at Echo Village, 24 apartment building. There are five apartments rented with some of the remaining initial residents that were living there. There are seven three bedrooms, seven four bedrooms, 10 two bedrooms, excuse me, in the 24 apartment building. Currently, 19 of those apartments are rented by students. They're advertised and rented by the room. That's 54 rooms. We have 70 parking spaces for the building. 67 of those parking spaces are used by the students. You can go down there any night when school is in session, and our parking lot, three parking lots, are filled. So to say that there isn't parking needed or that students of this age aren't looking to drive their cars, they absolutely are. Absolutely are. And I have two teenage sons, actually 18 and 21. They work at McDonald's. They want to go to the mall. Takes them an hour with the transportation system that we have now. They have to connect on a bus. So families that want to go shopping by the bus, takes them an hour to get to Stop &amp; Shop or Big Y, same distance to get to the mall. So we need parking spaces. We do need a better transportation system with the buses, you know, whether that means five, 10-minute, you know, a bus every five or 10 minutes. But we also need better connections and better connection times. Without that, we're not ready to say we don't need parking downtown, or we don't need parking with any new development. So I'm voting for this article. Thank you.
Yes, second in from the aisle, third row.
Pam Rooney, Precinct 9. I'm going to speak against this article for several of the reasons that have been spoken But I would like to request that if this article can be defeated, there is a very, very serious parking problem that is exacerbated by the presence of residential units in the downtown area. The irony, of course, is that we recognize that the overall driving issue of our economics is the lack of housing. We've acknowledged that, and the lack of downtown businesses. There's also a competing anxiety toward building bigger buildings in the outlying residential areas. So unfortunately, we are driven to focusing on the downtown area. We cannot increase our businesses and our housing if we require the amount of parking that is, that is sort of across the board assigned through this article. There are some merits, but I think it really needs to be worked on further. I would appreciate if the Planning Board would take this up as a absolutely priority item for their coming year. We cannot grow the downtown businesses if the downtown parcels are primarily parking surface lots. You can't have business and parking and expect it to succeed. So with very mixed emotions, because I am a neighbor who will be impacted directly by the overflow and the spillover of parking from all of the above-mentioned developments, I still have to say, I think we need to defeat this article and come up with a more rational or better-balanced one. Thank you.
Yes, right here, purple.
Patty Blaner, Precinct 4. I call the question.
Most of the previous question has been made and seconded. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will come to an immediate vote on the motion under Article 24. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We now come to a vote on Article 24. The motion is in terms of the article. This also requires a two-thirds vote to pass since it is a change to the zoning bylaw. All those in favor of the motion under Article 24, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator does not hear two-thirds. I see enough cards. We will have a tally vote. This is card number six. If you need to use a blank, please print your name legibly. Please stay in your seat until the tellers release your row.[1193.21]